I'd like to reconvene Congress after a brief recess for engrossment. We are now on reports of select committees. Are there any committees to report? Congresswoman Pratt.
Rules and Ethics reporting resolution over ONCR 1527, or resolution to adopt the Osage Nation tribally owned self-insurance plan to be the payer of last resort for eligible tribal members and to allow the Osage Nation to purchase individual policies for tribal member employees, to the insurance marketplace or directly with medical carriers. The sponsor is Ron Shaw, the sponsor of Angel of Adam, Archie Mason. The final coming action of the pass of supplementing gross, three yes votes from Brad Shaw and Suprenon. Also, the bill number ONCA 1604, an act to amend ONCA 1593 to provide supplemental appropriation for a donation to the United States Marine Corps detachment in the amount of $10,000 for this year 2016 and to establish an alternate effective day. The sponsor is Angel of Adam, the sponsor of Mr. Maker and Archie Mason. The final coming action of the pass of supplementing gross, the three yes votes from Brad Shaw and Suprenon.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Congressman Shaw.
I'd like to take a motion, suspend the rules, modify the agenda, and place ONCR 1527 on third reading of today's agenda.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion to the motion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will see both of these, this resolution and this bill on third reading right now. We will start with ONCA 1604, an act to amend ONCA 1593 to provide supplemental appropriation for a donation to the United States Marine Corps detachment in the amount of $10,000 for this year 2016 and to establish an alternate effective day. Congresswoman Pratt is the sponsor. How do you wish to proceed, Congresswoman? Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Congressman Maker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of Congress, I would like to say that any of our veterans or organizations, they need help. We have all these veterans coming from the recent combat community overseas. We all know what's going on in the Middle East. And these guys are coming home, and they're all shot up, blown up. And I'll tell some of our colleagues here, if you don't think they need this money, just go down there and still use the veteran hospital, spend a couple hours in there, and liberate your heart seeing what those guys are going through. So anytime you have a few kind of veterans or citizens, you're glad to meet them. So much is encouraged everywhere, and we support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. So any other member that wishes to speak for or against? I have Congressman Mason, and then Congressman Butler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just wanted to relay again a personal comment from Archie Mason, is that I support our warriors, past and present. I respect those that are sitting, as our colleagues, served in this, had service to the country, got their flag up behind Assistant Chief up there. And I support this, and I support our soldiers, our sailors, our airmen, our Marines. I support all of them, and I support the veterans. Without them, we wouldn't be safe anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Congressman Butler.
The day that the motion was made to take this money out, there were just a handful of us that voted no. We didn't want to see that happen. We wanted that money to stay in our honor. Specifically, I can only remember Congresswoman Norris, Congresswoman Pratt, myself, and I think Congresswoman Walker. Now, some may not have understood what was going on when that congressperson took out that money. And that's where I'm saying we have to pay attention, sitting in our seats, because things move very quickly. And something that you may have thought was one thing may not be entirely the case. Donation is defined as something such as money, food, clothes, et cetera, that you give in order to help a person or an organization. The act for instance of donating, making it a gift, especially to a charity or a public institution, a free contribution. I think there are members of Congress here that are struggling with what donation means. We have several line items where people turn receipts in to get their donation. In other people's eyes, that is a sense of checks and balances, accountability. They're turning receipts in and we're seeing what they're getting for the money. But by definition, doesn't say anything about checks and balances, or turning in receipts, or seeing where the money goes. Donation is you give the money to the individual or the group, and they do with it what they want to do with it. That's a donation. So if we're going to start doing checks and balances, and I'm not saying I have a dog in this fight, because I quite know it. But if we're going to do it for one, then we do it for all. And if we're going to donate and not have checks and balances or turn receipts for all the groups, then we just donate. And that organization or individual does what they see fit with the money. So I'm going to support this again, and I hope that it passes. The next special session that we call, I would like to see some donation money go into Native American churches of the Osage Nation benefits. There's four fireplaces. Ready Go Lookout, Andrew Gray, and Seek Pratt. I think that that's a very worthy endeavor, and I just wanted to throw that out there. I hope that this gets the votes that it needs to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Congressman Norris.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and members of Congress. Being a veteran myself, I know how important it is to look to organizations for help sometimes. And I know that these veterans organizations out there, such as the Marine Corps League and the American Legion and others, they do a great service to our veterans. We have veterans that come home, and they're dead in combat, they're lost, and they don't know which direction to turn. And sometimes these organizations, they can mentor these people and act as big brothers and help them. And we have veterans that pass on later in life, and maybe it's combat-related, maybe they've lived out their lives. But these men and women of these veterans organizations, they vote, and they take care of that person at the end of life, and they take care of the family. And it means something to that family to have representation from these organizations there to support them in their time of need. So speaking as a veteran, I support the Marine Corps League in putting the money back in. I voted last time not to remove that money, leave it as is. But as my colleague says, there are others that voted, maybe they didn't understand what was going on at the time. This is an important donation. I feel that we ought to support these people, and I'm going to be voting yes.
Thank you.
Or voting yes, keep the money.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other member, Congressman Suprenon?
I hadn't intended to say it, I think everybody is, so I'm going to. But I, of course, I always support veterans. At every meeting that we have, there may everyone include in their prayer, prayer for veterans, military people, wherever they are. And once in a while, you've got to put your mind where your mouth is. So I will vote yes. I don't think there's any question, no question that's been passed. I think before on that, a lot of people thought they were adding a category to that bill. And in fact, they would have taken a category out. Anyway, this is our attempt to fix it.
Thank you, Congressman Suprenon. Any other member wishes to speak for or against this bill?
Members of Congress, I'm glad, Congresswoman, I applaud you for the debate on definitions of words. And a donation is a donation, and it is a gift. But we are giving the Osage Peoples' Money to organizations to use to help veterans. And I think that we all want things to benefit veterans. I think that we all have, holding the higher guard, the work that they have done, the sacrifice they've made for this country, and us to have our freedoms. I support helping veterans. What I would like to piggyback on the Congresswoman, that what I said, is we aren't consistent in how we vet and give donations here in this body. Some people, we ask to see financial statements, or some people, they're asked to get their donation by turning receipts in. I hope that this body, between now and the next time we appropriate and alter the future session, we have a good feeling to where we don't get into situations like this, where we don't understand one, donation because we don't have information, we understand another better because we have financial statement, we understand one because I have to go get their donation with the receipt. We need to be consistent across the board for any of the Osage Peoples' Money that we give out. And I'm going to challenge us to get better about how we handle donating the Osage Peoples' Money.
Any other member wishes to speak for or against the bill? Congressman Pratt.
Well, thank you for everyone who has brought up to speak on this bill. I appreciate your support and support. I too voted against this amendment when it was on the floor during fall session. And I do think a few people wasn't quite clear on what it did, but it did strike Marine Corps detachment and their $10,000 preparation. It has been in for several years. I can't speak to how many exactly, but I was against it. This is why I'm bringing it back, because I do feel that that particular donation was singled out. But I know that there's American Legion Coast 198, and there's Marine Corps detachment, and they are separate groups of individuals, but also members can be a member of Coast 198. But they do have, the Marine Corps has their meetings, have separate meetings, and they have some fully distinct members of theirs. Many of them went into the meetings, and they have been disabled since their time of service. And as a veteran, it is near and dear. And there's many things I support, but I do support our veterans as a veteran, because I know there are many, we represent 1% of the population that have served our country. And again, many have were hurt during their service. Many are physically and mentally ill, and a lot of times, they don't receive the respect or support that maybe they should, particularly get non-veterans. When they came home, many were not respected. And so we move forward in trying to show them, especially as Indian people, we are trying to, we did a good job, and we continue to do a good job of supporting veterans, because maybe non-Indians do not have that support. And we do hold them in higher regard. And so I'm bringing this back in to support them, because they do many things for their fellow soldiers, and we can sometimes provide that assistance. And I, for one, as a veteran, a member of American Legion Coast 198, thank the Osage Nation. And as well, I know that my fellow soldiers thank the Osage Nation for their assistance, because when that time comes, I would like for that assistance to be there, the time that these men and women give of their lives, to give that one last honor when we send them home. And we can provide that for them, and that's where a lot of this time comes from. And we just lost a fellow soldier, a good soldier. To this day, she's a good soldier. She's a retired sergeant first class in the Army. She is the adjutant for American Legion Coast 198, and she passed away a while ago in San Diego during the National Congress of American Indians. And I was really shocked to learn that when I returned home. And there's good soldiers out there, and she was a very small good friend of mine. And so she was able to have, I think, I'm sorry, apologize, but during that meeting, the last Coast 198 meeting, I kind of lost my composure, because I didn't know that she had fallen from a leukemia while I was on, and they had her funeral. And so we spent that meeting a couple of weeks ago talking about her funeral, and they got somebody probably that honors, full honors, that she received at her funeral. And so I thank you. I appreciate your support, and Speaker Whitehorn, I accept your challenge. This group accepts your challenge. We have received the budget, and I have spoken with the commander of the Marine Corps detachment and those on the two meetings, the last two meetings of Coast 198, to say, please do a better job. Because they do many things, so I would like for them to really put it out there, what they do. You know, they're a humble group, and so they don't, you know, have communications or Osage News and whatnot. I'm not talking here that these veterans organizations are doing, but I would like for them to share that with you to the best of their ability. So I have spoken greatly with both groups to make sure that this group has the information that they need and can afford. And so we do accept that challenge, and I appreciate everybody's words. I apologize for voting there for a second, and I urge you to vote with us, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Congressman Pratt. The question is, shall ONCR 1604 pass?
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yack?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Bucklehead? Yes. Speaker Whitehorn?
Yes. ONCR 1604 passes. There's an alternate effective day, and in discussion for that. All in favor of the alternate effective day passes? Say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, alternate effective day passes. The next bill on third, the next resolution on third reading is ONCR 1527, a resolution to specify that the Osage Nation tribally owned self-insurance health plan may be the payer of last resort for eligible Osage Nation employees, and to allow the Osage Nation to purchase individual supplemental policies for employees through the insurance marketplace or directly with health insurance carriers. Congressman Shaw is the sponsor of that resolution. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll vote.
Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against ONCR 1527? Seeing none, Congressman Shaw, you have the floor.
Congressman's first approach regarding sponsoring this resolution, I believe I was opposed, because I've got some knowledge of the use of this feature, the Affordable Care Act and the Health Care Improvement Act, in trying to protect tribal health dollars, whether it be a self-insured employee insurance plan, or whether it be a contract health services, now known as purchasing referred care. This resolution primarily focused towards trying to conserve monies that are in tribally insured or self-insured employees' health plan. What that means is that when there are employees that are beneficiaries of that plan, and they have expenses that are up to $200,000 plus, that those plans are paid out of the fund that's usually replenished with premiums paid by employees. Nonetheless, it's a tremendous increase. So there are strategies ported to tribes to be able to try to conserve or retain monies in that self-insured insurance plan. And the Affordable Care Act allows tribes to sponsor premium, that is pay premiums, for employees who are known to be high consumers of the health care dollar, in this case, self-insured health plans. And those policies can be sponsored, premiums paid to that employee one month, and they can opt out the next, or as other non-native beneficiaries in the insurance marketplace that only do so and take enrollment once a year. Indian beneficiaries can do it once a month. So that flexibility allows the sponsorship feature to be able to be a benefit. The payer of last resort piece means that if it's a self-insured insurance plan, may become the payer of last resort, after all other insurance plans in effect have paid, whether it be contract health care, whether it be this supplemental policy we're talking about being purchased on behalf of the employee and sponsored by the Osage Nation. It's a way to conserve money so that all other payers pay first, and then deductibles and copays then could be absorbed by the tribally self-insured insurance plan. And so money stays higher, presumably the primary payer takes the price, so it allows the employee plan to become the payer of last resort. So we were approached and asked that in general, some insurance plans get to be made the payer of first resort, even if their plan's purchased through the Affordable Care Act. But ordinarily, if the governing body passes a resolution such as this one, they usually will pull back and adopt a decision of primary payer. And so that's the purpose of this resolution, and I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. The question is, shall ONCR 1527 pass?
Congressman Yack?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suprenon?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Bucklehead?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn?
Yes. ONCR 1527 passes. Congress, or ONCR 1604 and ONCR 1527 to enrollment. We are now in motions and notices on our agenda. Congressman Pratt?
I think a motion that Congress adopt the recommendation of the Rules and Ethics Committee regarding Rule 512.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes.
Motion in a second, discussion to the motion. Congressman Walker?
I just know in the past, when we consider rule changes, we've done it the next day, we just have the opportunity to look at it, vote on it tomorrow. A lot of them want to vote on it today, so we have, but not have a good time.
Any more discussion to the motion? Congressman Shaw?
I would support the notion of waiting a day, because these are incredibly simple and straightforward, which I'm actually going to confront him. Change two days, three days, two days to three days, 48 to 72 hours, and change the legal citation from the bill to the code. That's it, my understanding of the change. If it were not simply a change, I would agree with Congressman Walker, that maybe taking this simplicity change allows it to be considered the same day.
Any more discussion to the motion? All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. The rules will be amended to the document that you have in front of you, which are really relatively clean, that something that changes to it. Congresswoman Bucklehead?
Take a motion to add ONCR 1601, a resolution to urge the Osage Nation Principal Chief and Osage Minerals Council to work together to ensure that the United States continues to protect the Osage Minerals State through federal court bills related to the unlawful acts of the wind energy companies, and to take other appropriate action to prioritize the fight against destruction caused by the industrial wind facilities in Osage Nation territory. On the call.
So.
The motion in a second to place resolution number?
ONCR 1601.
1601 on the proclamation. Is there any discussion to that motion? Congressman Bucklehead?
Today, the Osage Nation government is directly engaged in two cases related to stopping the wind energy companies. The first is a lawsuit filed by the executive branch in our Osage Nation District Court. That lawsuit was never served with the wind energy companies, which really has no impact. I believe that we went to a special session, and if we didn't go into a special session for this, it was actually done in a special session. And it was a fight to even get the law passed, to get that over to the court. Absolutely nothing was done about it. I mean, we filed it before them, there you have it, it's still sitting. The second is a lawsuit in Oklahoma courts that is now before the Oklahoma Supreme Court that questions whether Osage County has the authority to allow the wind energy companies to proceed as it has. Another lawsuit was brought on by the United States as trustee for the Osage Minerals State received an adverse ruling from the federal district court. Neither the Osage Nation, through the Principal Chief's office, or the Minerals Council are parties in this case. So we are totally relying on the federal government to win this case. I feel that the Osage Nation could be and should be doing the work in this matter. And a good number of constituents feel that way. Any of you all have attended the meetings that they've had in Great War, Solly, Pahaska. I know that there are a few of you all that have. There's a lot of support behind this, so I urge you to vote yes.
Any more discussion to the motion? Congressman Suprenon?
Motion to add to the agenda.
To the proclamation, the law on the proclamation is chief.
Question is, can we add that to the chief's proclamation?
Yes. It's, yes, my review of the special sessions law, there's nothing that prohibits the Congress from adding items to a proclamation. My review of the special sessions law and my discussions with legal counsel, there's nothing prohibits the law from us doing that. And the executive concurs with that.
Okay, I don't know. I'm supportive of the resolution. I'm pretty sure.
Okay. Sir?
We got so many rules, I can't keep up.
Is there any discussion to the motion? All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Are there any opposed to the motion? Seeing none, the motion passes. Give me just a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much, okay. Are there any more motions and notices? Congressman Mason?
Education schedule to be at one o'clock in September.
Thank you Congressman. Congressman Pratt?
I am going to be ready to cancel the meeting that was four or five p.m. today.
Thank you Congresswoman. Congressman Suprenov?
Congress has properly noticed the meeting today at 2:30, but we've been told that something may happen today that will have a direct bearing on a single piece of legislation that we're going to consider, so we're canceling the meeting today, and we'll have a 2:30 tomorrow and replace it with a debate meeting.
Thank you Congressman. Congressman Walker?
Well, Government Operations had a committee meeting scheduled for my afternoon, so I guess this can be pushed to tomorrow's agenda.
Okay.
About five minutes.
Congressman Mason?
I'd like to make the knowledge of one of our staff, Ms. Walker, who has successfully completed and is now in the official department area, and is continuing to work on some additional certifications. I want to applaud her. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Walker. Any more motions or notices? Seeing none, we're adjourned.
We'll adjourn after.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned until 10 a.m.